Chief?
All right. You, of course, we're gonna run through the form everyone of what we have. So the approval minutes will be from the April meeting since we did the correspondence. We had the Officer Boss is a good neighbor. His neighbor sent in a little note as you can see in there that thanking him for helping her on many occasion when she needed it. Appreciate Mrs. Nancy Claus for sending that to us. And then we're gonna update you on the emergency hire process. Now that we're fully staffed and that we're, we had the process open that was voted on, we're gonna ask the, recommend to the Board of Safety to close that since we have the traditional hire list coming up that Steve has brought to us tonight here. We have everything verified.
Chief, is your mic on only because we have a really good?
I think I gotta talk closer. Okay, I'm sorry.
And then because the air conditioning was so loud.
Yeah, no, I think the air would also, yeah. So, yeah, we're bringing the old business back up because that's still, that was still active after the last hiring process. So we want to formally close that process. And then Deputy Chief here will update you on our traditional hire process. We have all the parts of that completed. It was verified by Stenard. And then finally, the list was compiled by Deputy Chief here to present for you tonight for review and vote. So we're gonna be asking for a motion to proceed with the new hire list as established. That's gonna be under PD and line item B, the new hire process. And then line item C, it's gonna be for PD also, it's Officer Banstra. We're gonna be recommending to the board to promote him from third class to second class patrolman, which will take effect June 23, 2025. He's completed all parts of the timed promotion that's required. So, and then also we have no vote will be required or any type of recommendation is that type, the retirement letter for Corporal Manley. He submitted a retirement letter for us this month. He's been with us since 1998. He's got his anticipated retirement date and payout date also in that letter. So it's a standard form that we process when somebody announces their retirement. So just notifying the board of his retirement. And then the use of force policy, we had Christian Bartolome review that. We just had some, it was about time to update everything, nomenclature in there, some of the terms out there outdated. And we just wanted to get everything cleaned up as regards to, because we're purchasing some new equipment through TASER. And we wanted to make sure the handheld electrotonic weapons are classified and identified properly in our report. So if there's any-
Chief, sorry, but I read through it. It seems like just a couple of words had to be changed.
It was just more cleanup of the terminology so there's no confusion. So, and also we applied that to our standards for Kalia also. So there's certain requirements and bullet points that they require us to have in our policy. So it's just a matter of housekeeping. And I sent it over to Christian just to make sure there's no confusion in it. Just another set of eyes on it to make sure, so.
Right on.
And everything goes towards the end, if you noticed, the red, the red lines were towards the end of the policy, it was nomenclature. So if there's any question, Christian's here tonight to explain them, and I'm here also, so to explain anything.
Thank you. I just want, Mr. Volkman, you can hear everything, correct?
Can you hear you? Yes.
Is it pretty clear for you, Bob, or?
Yes, fine, it's fine.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure.
So also if there are any recommendations or anything, there's a time delay, so like we recognized last meeting. And then also one more item on the reports, we're just gonna, for, starting next month, we're just gonna be moving forward with our time for the start of our meetings will be five o'clock for the study sessions. And immediately after will be 5:10 as Bob recommended last month. This month we kind of overlooked that part. So we'll have the meeting starting at 5:10 immediately after the study sessions. Our study sessions usually don't last too long, but we're gonna have that so there's not the big void between the two meetings.
Will, will that be flexible at all if we have a larger list to go through?
Yeah, we can definitely forecast that and move it forward.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
That's about it, I have to, thank you.
Thank you.
For tonight.
Chief Patterson? Yes, so for correspondence, we had a thank you letter from St. Michael's School. They held a fundraiser and a competition for all the kids. And the winners get to take a ride in the fire truck. And we go out to lunch with the winners also, with the whole crew. So they're sending a thank you letter for that when we did that. We actually went to Rosati's Pizza with the kids and had a great time with them. The second thank you letter was from the Bradshaw family. Brian Bradshaw was a friend of all the fire departments around here. He visited them all, spent a lot of time around us, very knowledgeable about fire stuff. And he passed away unfortunately unexpectedly. And the family sent a thank you because we did a lot of stuff for him between us and the Highland Fire Department for his funeral and that. And that's what that's for. And then under, nothing under old business, under new business, we're looking to seek approval to hire three part-time employees. You have their list of names, you review their files. So we're just seeking approval so we can move forward with that process. And that is all for us.
Very good. So if we hire these three, what does that bring your part-time staff up to?
Dave, what does that bring yourself?
Do you know?
Maybe thirty, maybe thirty-five?
Okay.
Ballpark.
And just for, I know we just recently had this conversation, just for clarification. So the full-time members of the department, we know are gonna be going through the merit board. Could you just clarify for, for the benefit of me and the best rest of the people on the safety board, the difference between the, the part-time firefighters and the full-time as far as the standards, the qualifications they're expected to meet? And why, why we're not bringing that in front of the merit board? It's a different set of standards, right?
Standards are the same, the requirements are the same to work for the Shallow Fire Department. The difference is part-time employees are not sworn, they are not eligible for promotion, and they're considered at-will employees.
And they're not part of the?
They're not part of the perf, they get no benefits from the town other than the liability insurance for working.
Okay. Edison?
And then my only other question is in signing, as we prepare to sign the eligibility roster, and it requires the signatures of members here, since Mr. Volkman's not physically present, how do we address that issue?
Can I have a look at it?
Sure.
So he's, he's here, he's just not-
Physically.
Physically here.
Do you give authority for someone to say his name?
Well, if, if he's not here without having issued a written proxy, do you, you've-
It's not, so we have the three that are required-
Yeah.
-to make that list eligible. But my question is, is it necessary for him to sign it or?
If you've got a quorum-
We do.
-here, then I don't think it would be necessary for him to sign it. I suppose if he wanted to, you know, if he were physically present at a meeting in the future and you wanted to bring it up again, you could. But if you've got a quorum, I would just proceed with the folks that are here.
Very good.
And if need be, I mean, I could stop in next week, I'll be back Sunday.
Yeah, if you could just stop by the office, Bob, assign the form. So it's, like I said, it's a quorum, it's voted on, so I believe it's, and just follow up.
I can always stop in and sign.
Yeah, thank you, Bob.
No problem.
Okay, any other business before we go, before we wait the seventeen minutes? Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
We will resume at 5:30. We're at the Town of Sherrville Board of Safety meeting for June fifth, twenty twenty five, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Eric Graff.
Here.
George Chorus. David Ennigenberg.
Here.
David Jarzuski.
Present.
Robert Volkman.
Here.
Attorney Christian Bartholomew.
Here.
Police Chief Peter Sormoz.
Here.
Deputy Chief of Police Steve McNamara.
Here.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Recording Secretary Stephanie Bodiger, here.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll need approval of the minutes for April third, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any conversation, gentlemen? We'll need a roll call vote.
Eric Graff.
Yes.
George Chorus. David Ennigenberg.
Yes.
David Jarzuski.
Yes.
Robert Volkman.
Yes.
Okay, approved unanimously. We will move on to correspondence. We'll start with the fire department. Thank you, letters.
Yes, the first one was from St. Michael's School. They held a fundraiser competition, and the winners of the competition won a day to spend with the firefighters, eating lunch, and they got a ride in a fire truck to the place of business that we had the lunch at, which was Rosati's. So the school sent us a thank you letter for participating in this with them. The second one was from the Brian Bradshaw family. Brian was a friend of the fire department for many years, spent a lot of time around us, and was part of our family. Unfortunately, Brian passed away unexpectedly on April sixteenth, and we partook and funeral arrangements and stuff and did a few things for him for being such a strong friendship to the fire department. The family just wanted to thank us for our help. And that's all we had.
Thank you. We'll move on to correspondence. PD.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received a note from Nancy Claus recognizing Officer Voss as a good neighbor. Nancy is Officer Voss's neighbor, and she just wanted to share her thoughts on every time she's reached out to Officer Voss for assistance, he was always there. She wanted us to know that, how grateful she is to have him as a neighbor. So, thank you, Nancy, for sending that note.
Thank you, Chief, and that doesn't surprise me, knowing Officer Voss.
Good man.
That's just the type of guy he is.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to old business. Start with the PD. Chief Sormoz with the emergency hire process.
Thank you. I just wanted to update the board. If you recall, a few months ago, we voted on to move forward with the emergency hire process so we could satisfy our authorized strength numbers, and currently, we are at authorized strength, and I'm going to recommend to the board to conclude or close the process, our emergency hire process tonight. Just recommending to the board to close that process.
Very good. I'll need that in the form of a motion to close the emergency hire process.
I'll make that motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Bob, and I'll need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none. I'll need a roll call vote.
Eric Graff.
Yes.
David Ennigenberg.
Yes.
David Jarzuski.
Yes.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Old business, fire department?
No old business.
Thank you, sir. We'll go on to new business. Turn it back over to the fire department. Chief Patterson, the approval of the hire for part-time employees.
Yes, you had reviewed the packets of the three employees that are listed on the agenda items there, and we're seeking approval to go forward with the hiring of the part-time employees.
Very good. We have, we haven't had a chance prior to this to review them. They come highly recommended from Assistant Chief Myers, so I'll need that in the form of a motion to hire the three listed part-time employees. I'll need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Eric Graff.
Yes.
David Ennigenberg.
Yes.
David Jarzuski.
Yes.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item B. Chief Sormoz, the new hire process.
I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief since he was in charge of the new hire process.
How you guys doing? First of all, I want to thank you guys for all the help with this process. You guys helped a ton with this process. We had to deal with a written exam, a physical agility, and then an oral board, and we compiled the list, which is, we were asking for a certification today for the eligibility list for twenty twenty five. There's eleven members that made it to the list. We're just asking for a certification, sign off on this.
Okay, so I'll need that in the form of a motion for the new hiring process list. I'll need a motion.
Second.
Mr. Volkman made the motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? I just wanted to add that I did sit in on this as part of the process, as did David to my right, and we have some really impressive candidates on that list, and we're really looking forward to getting some of them hired. So I'll need that in the form of a motion to accept the new hiring process list. We did? Okay. I'll need a roll call vote, then.
Eric Graff.
Yes.
David Ennigenberg.
Yes.
David Jarzuski.
Yes.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item C. Go back to the police department. The time promotion for Officer Banstra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a time promotion for Officer Banstra. Officer Banstra is currently a third-class patrolman. He has completed all necessary requirements for third-class patrolmen, and I am recommending to the board to advance him to second-class patrolman effective June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. All the letters of recommendation are in your file for review from his supervisors and from the patrol commander.
Very good. So I'll need that in the form of a motion for Officer Banstra to patrol Officer Second Class.
I'll make that motion.
David's made the motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any conversation? Hearing none. I'll need a roll call vote.
Eric Graff.
Yes.
David Ennigenberg.
Yes.
David Jarzuski.
Yes.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll stay with the police department. Retirement letter.
Thank you. In front of you, you have retirement letter submitted by Corporal Timmily. He is currently in our patrol division as supervisor. He has submitted his retirement since he is in the deferred retirement option plan, so his last date will be March of twenty twenty-six. So the form is there just for notification. Nothing is required for the board to move on tonight.
Okay, very good. Then we'll stay with the police department. Chief Sormoz for the use of force policy. Update.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The use of force policy is normally up to date with us. We've reviewed that on a regular basis, although we had a few areas which we're moving forward with the new equipment purchase, and we just wanted to clean up some of the terms and the use of the terms in that policy. That's for our handheld electronic weapons, less-than-lethal weapons. So also, after completing that, it's reviewed by our board attorney, Christian Bartholomew, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I would recommend for the board to move forward with the current policy as it was submitted, with all the edits.
Okay, so we will need a motion for the use of force policy update, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll need that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any conversation, gentlemen? Hearing none. Need a roll call vote?
Eric Graff.
Yes.
David Ennigenberg.
Yes.
David Jarzuski.
Yes.
Robert Volkman.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. We will move on to reports. We'll start with the police department. Chief Sormoz.
Yes, just one item. For next month's meeting, we're going to move the meeting time closer to the study session time. It seems there's quite a bit of a time gap between the two meetings, so we're going to be starting the study sessions at five o'clock and at five-ten for the public meeting, the regular meeting, and I just recommend for the board to move forward with the motion to accept those dates, to accept the times for the meetings.
So on the notification, it'll just say that the regular meeting will begin following.
Yes.
The study session, correct?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
That way, we don't have the void in time between the two meetings.
Very good.
It was, it was recommended last month by a board member, Volkman. I, we just did not move forward with it this month.
Okay. Is that all for reports, Chief?
That's it. Other than what's in your packet for tonight. Yes, thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to Fire Chief Patterson. Reports?
No additional reports from what was submitted to you. However, I just wanted to advise that to thank everybody. Our Dave actually came out today. We had our swearing-in of our two new full-time firefighters that you guys helped us with the hiring process, and everything went really well today, and I just want to make sure that Dave, thank you for being there today, and we appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thanks for representing Dave.
My pleasure.
Okay, we'll move on to reports. The attorney.
Nothing.
Christian. Nothing. Okay. Board members, anything from the board?
Just like to say kudos to the Chief Sormoz's staff and the officers for another great fundraiser with Cop on the Roof. Outstanding job, men and women. Did a great, great job again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else from the board? Business from the floor. Anything from the floor? And just for the record, would you identify yourself and spell your last name, please?
Georgie Anne Glavis, seventeen twenty-seven Chelsea Street. I'm here on behalf of Logan's Love for two reasons. One, we received a donation for a transmitter from a local organization called the Order of a Hepa, so I didn't know if I have to bring the check next month, or can I just drop it off the fire station or wherever?
It's up to you. Yeah, you can drop it off the fire station.
Okay. And then the next thing is, I tried coming last month to invite you guys, but we have our golf outing next Friday at Wicker Park, so if anybody wants to come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you leave a flyer with us, we could also circulate it to the fire department so they have it.
Thanks again. Anything else from the floor? Okay, hearing none. I'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any conversation? This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.